Probably September 2021, USD 350, Board of Education meeting the order. First up, we have the revenue neutral rate hearing. We'll open the hearing now. Any public comments related to the rate notice published? Mr. President?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, we'll close the hearing. Now we'll open our budget here. So any public comments related to the budget published on August 25? All right, thank you. We'll close the hearing and continue. Business meeting, any additions or changes?
Yeah, let's remove number eight on our, that's the tour of the building. Probably be best to stay out of the building by now. And we're missing a few anyway, so we'll catch up on that next month.
Okay, thank you. And we get the agenda approved.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second and that we approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carried. Consent agenda.
Nothing unusual to report on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second and to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carried. Feature comments? So. Okay, thank you. All right, revenue neutral rate resolution.
We need to, we're required by the law to pass this resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate. So I'd recommend approving that resolution as it's presented here.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the resolution to exceed their revenue neutral rate for the 2021-22 budget as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second and that the board approve the resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the 2021 through 22 budget as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Okay, the 2021-22 budget.
There's no changes to the budget as it's been published. I'd recommend approving that.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the 2021-22 budget as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second and that the board approve the 2021 through 22 school, or budget as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carried.
We have some issues we need to discuss. Want everybody to keep in mind your goals all along have been keep our kids in school, keep the school operational, and keep everyone safe and healthy. None of us want to be in this position of making these decisions. I know those ladies over there have been put in a bad spot. We've all been put in a bad spot. It is what it is. We didn't create this mess, but it is our responsibility to address it. People are not happy, no matter what we do, but we still need to move forward. I do want to say thank you to Lisa. She's been putting in a lot of effort with this testing and contact tracing mess. And thank you Shannon for everything you've done since March of 2020. So thank you for that. You know, there's going to be some Monday morning quarterbacking and some keyboard warriors that are going to have some things to say about what we decide and already have. But I think we can find a way to do the right thing. We're not doing things a lot different than we did last spring when we ended the school year. For whatever reason, it's a lot different right now. I don't know if it's just the new variant, but it's incredible how contagious and how quickly it's spread amongst our students. Staggering. Our testing situation, because we were doing the testing, we discovered those cases in a matter of a couple of days. So I've heard some say, well, if we wouldn't have been testing, then we wouldn't be in this mess. We wouldn't have been in this mess for Thursday and Friday, but we would have discovered them this week. And I believe our situation would have been exponentially worse this week because we could have very easily had 20-plus students walking around our hallways today thinking that what they had was mild allergies. That's a lot of what we've seen with the cases that we've been dealing with. Sniffles, scratchy throat, it's allergy season, we're cutting corn, turns into COVID. Not turns into COVID, but turns out it is COVID. And so a lot of people come to school because they think, I'm fine, I'm not sick, I just have what I have. So we have to address a couple of things specifically, our testing program and the potential for masks and what we do moving forward. So I'm going to let these ladies speak to our situation and some recommendations they have at this time. And then I've come up with some recommendations of what I think we should do to change our protocols. And then we can all have a discussion about that. If that works.
Who gets a short drill?
I have 118 kids quarantined right now. And that could have been cut considerably if we'd be masking on the bus. And so my suggestion is we go with the federal mandate and wear masks on all school buses for the year. And then the KDHE program, when kids are in quarantine, they're supposed to be wearing masks. And so I would like to see us follow the KDHE protocol and wear masks if they're testing in the test-to-play or test-to-learn program. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How many positive cases do we have in our school district right now? Do you have that?
I do. We have 23 students and five staff. And four of those staff members were vaccinated.
Shannon?
I agree that masking on buses, I think, would be a big help with case numbers. I think masking in classrooms, especially whenever there's not a way for those students to be distanced, would be a big help. I think we've seen, like Josh said firsthand, how much more contagious things are that are going around right now. I know just from doing contact tracing case investigations for positive cases that have tested positive for the Delta variant, they can't tell us where they came in contact with it, so then it's considered community spread. So it's here. And I mean, not every test that we can do right now will tell us if it's Delta or not, but it's kind of being proven that it's more transmissible and we're seeing it firsthand. And I think putting something in place that will slow things down and keep kids in school and would be proactive rather than reactive would be a good thing to do.
Thank you.
So on our, got a few recommendations here. Sorry, I didn't print this off where you have it in your packet. I've been struggling with how to, how to exactly word these things. But I think we are in a position, we need to do something different. And masking is, it probably needs to be part of that. I don't want to wear a mask. I know you guys don't want to wear it. Nobody wants to. Nobody likes that. And there's a conversation, I guess, about do masks work? I think that's, we're asking a yes or no question when we ask that, and it doesn't have a yes or no answer. It's kind of like, do seatbelts work? Well, yes, but it's not going to prevent every death in a car accident. A mask is not going to prevent spread of disease 100% of the time. The vaccine is not going to stop the, stop you from getting a virus 100% of the time. So do they work is the wrong question. Are they, can they be effective and make a difference is what we need to determine. So my recommendation, and we can discuss this, require masks of everybody when indoors, if you can't socially distance. If we get below 6% of total count of close contacts, so those that would be identified for quarantine and positive cases, if we're below 6%, then we would be optional. Masks are optional. If we're above that, we're required for everybody. So if we get above that threshold, we do it for two weeks and reevaluate. If we're below that threshold, we can go back to optional. For those families that have, their students have a medical reason or if their family is just adamant that, by God, my kid's not wearing a mask, we're not doing that to my kid. The family can opt out. We have that freedom for the family to say, my kid's not doing that. There'd be some exceptions if you're an active participant in athletic events, similar to what we did last year, Casey's rules were last year. Also, regardless of what our numbers are, starting Monday, coming back from this, I'm guessing our numbers are still going to be above that 6%, but starting Monday, the 20th, if we can return to school, we'd just go two weeks with the masks. Masks required for those riding on buses and school vehicles. We would need to determine if there's an opt-out for that or not, or if that's a hard and fast rule, you're riding on the bus, you're wearing it. Here's an incentive to wear the masks. If masks are worn by somebody that tests positive and me as a close contact, I would not have to quarantine. Just monitor for symptoms for 14 days and we need to report any onset of symptoms. So do masks make a difference? Well, they will if you're wearing them and I don't have to quarantine. Obviously, our visitors will have to follow whatever mask requirements we have in place for staff and students. On the quarantine and exclusion from school, this is where our testing information comes into play. If you've been identified as a close contact, we've followed CDC guidance that if you've been fully vaccinated or if you have tested positive in the last three months, you don't need to quarantine. So you don't need to test to stay in school. I think we've seen enough spread in our vaccinated people that we should remove that. I think we need to encourage people to get vaccinated. That might be a detriment to that, but we've seen enough. So if I've been exposed to somebody that tested positive, I would be considered a close contact even though I've been vaccinated. And added this, this doesn't really change anything, just that, just kind of a clarification. With our testing program, that only applies to school and school activities. So if a student tests negative, they can stay in school and participate. But when they go home, they're still subject to quarantine requirements from the county. On the weekends, they should be subject to that as well. We don't really have an option to test to go to work or do other things. And then with our testing, what's the testing procedures? Nothing's really different there. Students who are testing to stay in school must wear a mask regardless of the situation outlined above, so no opt-out for that. If you're a close contact, you can quarantine for 10 days at home or you can test and stay. But if you're doing that, you have to wear a mask regardless of whether it's optional. And we can't just say we get to opt out on that one. And then this is just a repeat of what I said earlier about we're masked, we're not subject to quarantine. With the supporting documents, nothing has really changed on the testing, our testing plan. We're just testing if they've been, you know, if there's symptoms or if they're close contact and they're going to test to stay, to stay in school. Lisa, Shannon, anything, is that things you can support there?
So I did reach out to an epidemiologist just because reading through KDHE guidelines that I'm supposed to be following, I understand the mask-to-mask, no quarantine. I have to follow guidance that the state gives me. So I'm not supposed to count that as not a contact just because there's the variation of wearing a mask like this where it's not covering or things like that at play that I can't be everywhere to see, to know that everybody's got masks on appropriately to be able to know that everything's kosher. But I mean, you guys can make a decision for the school.
I think the one thing that does is incentivizes the mask wearing. And we did see that last year when we changed our quarantine rules to, if you're wearing a mask, it makes a difference on the quarantine rules because that's what the kids see. I mean, we're all seeing it, that the spread is real.
And it's not that I don't think masks work. I just have guidelines that I have to follow.
Right, I understand.
Where did we get to 6%? Is that just?
There have been a number of other schools, some superintendent lists or information going around, sharing some of that threshold data. Derby is one in particular that they, they have that in place. And I don't know, maybe Shannon, you've seen some of that threshold data several school districts. 6% is the number. And Shannon, I visit about the percentage, 10% seems a little high. We would need to make some exceptions in certain cases. For instance, if we've really had no cases for a month and now we have a case in third grade and we can do a modified quarantine with that class. We've got one kid, that could potentially be 26, 27 kids right there. So is that a concern that we've got spread? Probably not yet. Very well could be. So having that 6% rule, but also use our brains and consult. Maybe that's not always a hard and fast rule. So third grade being an easy example. Let's take that.
So backing up to his question just a little bit, Josh. We're well about 6%. What are we, 20%?
We're 20, 25%.
25%?
Is that how it, between close contacts identified? We would be far lower if we had masks on the bus, even just our junior high event, we would have been 30 fewer probably.
And right now, the only way that that 25% can be in school if they're not testing positive is to be tested every day.
Those quarantines though for our kids started on, the bus was Thursday. And so it'll be their 10 days when they come back Monday, so we won't have to worry about that big group.
I guess my, reason my question is I'm kind of concerned with the amount, if a kid to stay in school and is in this group has to be swabbed every day. I understand there's been some people, because they have to be swabbed every day, has had infections from being swabbed every day or nasal problems from having that so often. I mean, and I've put all the responsibility on the school to do that. You know, it's a lot of liability for us on anything.
Where did you hear that?
In other places like nursing homes where people have had to be tested every day.
I would think nursing homes might be different population than kids. They've got a lot healthier.
Same situation, I was unconcerned with the nasal, you know, testing. And there's different, some people swab and then some people go, you know, for the gusto, you know? And I don't know what we're doing for sure, but.
I've been testing every day.
So.
And I guess my thought was if we're having these kids do it, I'm going to do it. And there was a bunch, we tested about 30 some kids Friday. And it's a lot for Lisa to handle. Having some assistance out there too is helpful. So Friday, we had 32 kids. I think that had we not tested them, they would have, they would have had to stay home. So that's, I think, beneficial that if we know they're negative, they come to school. Otherwise, they would have had to stay home for the 10 days. So I see that as a benefit with the testing. I know some of them are of the opinion that if we don't test, then it's not there. But yeah, it's, I don't want to do it every day. I don't want to subject the kids to that. But if it's, it's an option to stay in school. And it's not required. We've had, we've had families say, I don't want my kid to be tested. And that option is to do the 10-day quarantine.
And the kids swab themselves?
Depending on the age supervised.
High school and above, but watch them.
Okay, yeah.
But theoretically, we could have a kid, just gets done, ends up in another group and can continually have to be swabbed, correct?
Yeah.
Is there any data as far as if you test negative 7:30 in the morning, at what point could you be contagious or could it kick in?
I can't find any.
Okay.
I look on PubMed and then CID and I haven't found any studies on it. Have you?
No, and I mean epidemiologists, whenever I've talked with them, the, so the Binax now tests, we're using them at the health department also. They're fairly accurate. I mean.
97%.
Yeah, they're, yeah. And they're not quite as accurate as the PCR test, but they're a whole lot nicer for the person that's being tested. The only thing I can say is that if you test somebody that's not symptomatic, sometimes you won't get a positive for a few days until they start having symptoms just because there's not enough viral load for the test to pick it up. And the PCR test, the one that does go up to the sinuses, is more invasive and it's a bit more sensitive.
So if we don't have our testing program, if the board's not comfortable doing that, our only option is the 10-day quarantine.
And in reality, you said a kid could go over and over and over. If we're using our masks and we're masking on the bus, we're not going to have the percentage of kids like we do right now. I wish, this won't.
And I mean, last year, just for an example, we hardly saw any influenza cases with all the mask use. I mean, they do help cut down on germ transmission of all kinds. So I mean, if they're going to be masking, it is going to be something proactive that's going to help.
What we've seen in our county right now as far as the variant versus the original, I guess. And versus not vaccinated and vaccinated.
So if we're not collecting a PCR test, there's no way to know if there's a variant strain. The only way to get that result is to do the PCR test, which is the more invasive one, and send it to the state lab for the whole genome sequencing for them to find a variant strain. So if we're just doing the antigen testing, we're not going to know about variant strains. Last time I checked, we still only had the 14 that I had reported that had come back as Delta. And that's so far the only variant that we've had in county is just the Delta variant.
I'm not a fan of masks, but we got to do something.
I'm, I'm not a fan of masks either, but it seems to me of the information that we're getting, if we went back to having masks be mandatory like it was at the beginning of last year, it wouldn't be a logistical nightmare for Lisa or the teachers or the administrators. Let's just get them in masks, get the numbers down, keep our kids safe and keep them in school.
Is there any discussion about going back to the no drinking fountains, no large groups before school, all those types of things?
Yeah, there's, our morning gym, we're going to make adjustments on. So schedule-wise, lunch, we're going to need to tweak just a little bit because we've got our younger kids that second grade is mixing with first and second grade a little bit just because of the timing issue. So adjusting times there. As far as the morning gym, last year, we had 7:50. Don't drop off your kid before that. Would have sent breakfast home. I don't want to, breakfast was not a good situation last year. I think we can still bring them in, serve them breakfast, keep them separated. And ask parents, if you don't need to bring your kid before 7:45, don't. And then drop them off at 7:45 and they go to the classroom. Something we need to work with the teachers on. That will cut down on the number of kids. We have in the gym in the morning, that's various grades. So that will help us with our elementary at least, stay better cohorted.
And I really do appreciate that the teachers are keeping seating charts. That's helpful.
The drinking fountains, are we going to shut those down again?
I don't, is there a recommendation on that?
Regarding that, so.
Are we going to offer any online yet? Have we decided about that as far as the kids that are staying?
I don't, I don't anticipate offering any online learning. If we have to shut down again, we're going to have to look at something like that. But it's, that's jumping through the hoops and kids aren't getting what they need. But that allows us to tick off some days, but we need them here learning.
I guess I'm trying to figure out what to do for the ones that say, I just don't want to do it. Have the right to say that, but then those kids are getting further behind.
Yeah.
You mean the ones that don't test and then opt out for the 10-day quarantine?
How long can I go on?
I've thought about that too.
Similar to what we've done in past years that have surgery and you're out for two weeks. You know, here's your stuff. We'll catch you up when we get back. What we experienced last year is it was not good for anybody. The online learning that we provided to those at home was not what it needed to be. And that took away from those that were in class. And so we tried to do it all. And you know, some did better than others, but it was, it was not good. Whatever we can do to keep in school every day. But so yeah, it's in the back of our minds of what do we need to do to provide some remote learning. Are we comfortable with these adjustments? Are we comfortable with these adjustments to the COVID protocols? And are we comfortable maintaining with that testing plan?
No, I'm not. I, I think that what we had last year at the beginning of the school year worked. And yes, it was uncomfortable and yes, there was a lot of concern from parents about their kids. But the kids were in school and they weren't getting sick. We loosened those up this year and now we have this situation. I think we should go back to what we did last year because it was better health-wise for the students. And I really do think if I was a teacher and I had to keep track of this student can be in my class but has to wear a mask for ten days, okay, it's been eight days now, they need to get out, go get tested or whatever. And you have twenty kids in your class and you have to keep track of that for everybody. That's just, that's expecting an awful lot of the teachers.
So when you say go back to what we did last year, what, there was a lot of things that we did last year that we've adjusted?
I'm talking about wearing masks.
Okay.
Having the bottles full of water, washing their hands, alternating the lunchroom times, limiting when we have to, the number of people that are in a facility at one time. I'm not saying shut me on the activities like football or volleyball to spectators, but if you're going to be those, you need to wear a mask. That's, that's my, that's my recommendation. And I, I feel very strongly that the vaccinations and the masks work. And we need to encourage those and use those, even if they are inconvenient or uncomfortable or unpleasant for people.
Okay, thanks Debbie. I'm in favor of what Josh has presented, making the masks required with the threshold in place. So that way, if it does back off, we have more leniency. But as it picks up, we kick back in. We got to do something different than what we are now, it's not working.
And we'll reevaluate that as a board?
Yeah.
In two weeks?
Yeah, well, as a staff, we would look at it in two weeks. And so that's part of why, having that threshold in place that as a staff, we can look at that and make that determination, not have to pull the board together every time things change. So we can move to optional and move to required, depending on the situation as you guys have approved it. But yeah, we need to, this will be a topic of discussion at each of our board meetings, I'm sure.
But if there's a case where we need to make an adjustment before the board meeting, meeting can be called like we had to yesterday, so.
I kind of go back to what last year, we can't control what people are doing out and about. Obviously, some, a lot of the people that are being quarantined aren't taking it seriously because I see them everywhere. So we have to do what we have to do in our facility to try and, and knock this down. So I'm in favor of what you've proposed with the masks and my kids are going to hate wearing the masks, but them wearing a mask and being in school is a lot better than me being their teacher at home. I can tell you that. My kids will not succeed if Taylor and I are their teachers. So I wish people took it more seriously with the quarantines. Wish people would stay home when they're supposed to, but, so that's why I think we have to do this.
I did want to speak to some of the things that I think we did last year. We, we thought was the right thing to do, that maybe we looked at and said, that's not absolutely necessary. You know, one example is with lunch, having our third and fourth graders eat in the cafeteria. They're separated by eight feet. As a class, they're cohorted. Having them in two completely different rooms is, is very difficult to manage. So something like that, we just determined that it's not necessary to keep them out of the same large room for twenty minutes. Balancing the staffing issue, because honestly, that was a nightmare last year. Did it make a difference? I can't point to one, one time that it really made a difference, but and it would really be treated the same as if they're in a separate room. If we had a positive case in third grade and the kids are eating eight feet away, it's not going to affect the fourth grade. So just little things like that, that we didn't know what we were doing last year and for God's sakes, we don't really know what we're doing this year. But again, we're trying to make the most of it. I wish I could say, this is it, this will fix it all.
Is there a grade level or is it all the way down to preschool?
I think just giving that, yeah, all the, everybody. And giving families that feel like four-year-old cannot do that, we're not going to have them do that, then you can say, we're not going to do that.
And honestly, if the parents would sit down and have a discussion with their child and explain why it's happening, they're, they're not, they're not inept. They know what's being said to them, they're smart little beings. They can have a conversation with an adult and have it put in a perspective of, this is to keep you and your friends safe, this is so that all of you can go to school together. If it's presented in a nice manner, I mean, it, it does make a difference.
But preschoolers and kindergartners will have it in their mouth?
No, my preschooler and kindergartner wear it every day and they do it appropriately because I've talked to them and showed them and I lead by example. Parents should be leading by example. And teachers can lead by example too. And they're in the classroom with the kids every day. And if they're leading by example, the kids are watching.
And I don't mean to sensationalize this, but I know we, I know you all know how serious it is and everybody does, but, you know, it's not just a matter of our kids getting it and our shutting down school, it's, it affects people in a real way. One of our substitute teachers, doesn't have anything to do with our school district, she hasn't subbed here since last year, I think, but. She passed away last Thursday, I think, her husband and her contracted COVID, sixty-three years old. And we've got, we've got people, employees taking care of their families, their elderly parents and. There's a real cost, not just closing down school for a week. I lose sleep over every night, so.
What are some of our surrounding schools doing, just out of curiosity?
As far as masks?
Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about.
Uh, not much.
Are we, I have more of a problem than any of the others?
Yes, yes. There have been other school districts closed down. Maxville's had some struggles, they've had several quarantines and cases. I don't, I don't know if we identified ours quicker because we're testing. But I don't know, did you have any information about our county or other school districts?
St. John's School District's the only one that signed up for the test to stay in play, but I've had conversations with the other two school districts regarding it. They're thinking about it. All three school districts have cases. Nobody's got none right now. St. John's got the most right now, but we're having the discussion to try and help with that. I mean, it's not just in the schools either, it's in the whole community. Every, it's all over right now, so.
We appreciate all the work that you're putting in. I mean, I, we know, we know the stress level that you have right now and we, as a board, I mean, I guess I'm speaking for myself, I, I wouldn't want to be going through this. It involves you, I appreciate what you're doing for us and for our kids.
Well, thanks. You talk about the hard work, I mean, really, Mr. White and Lisa have done almost all of the contact tracing and all that, that's, that's been the hard thing about the last.
And our office truly appreciates that too because I, I couldn't get it done if you guys weren't doing it. I couldn't, there's no way. Today was crazy because there was only two of us in the office and there's no way I could get it done without the schools helping.
We definitely appreciate it. All you guys are going above and beyond your regular duties. It's not a good situation, but we appreciate that for.
Hey, Mr. White, I want to address two things.
Sure.
Talking about the homework and, you know, the online learning, I just want everybody to understand that we're not just saying, okay, if your kid doesn't come to school, they're not doing anything for ten days. We have a system, at the high school, junior high, we have a system in the office where teachers drop off work, people can come get it, then we can, then they bring the completed work back and we give it to the teachers. And they also, almost all of our teachers are putting their assignments on Google Classroom, so the access is there for students to still learn. And the communication between the student and the teacher is still there. It's just that we're not dedicating time during class and taking away from the students that are in class to try to do remote at the same time as in-person. I just, just want you to understand that's not, we're not just saying you're on your own for ten days, come back and we'll try and figure it out. The other thing, Josh, you, you mentioned opting out and the bus rating mask. Just my opinion, the masks on activity buses, I don't believe should be optional if we're in a masking situation. Activities are a privilege, not a right. And so if a student wants to participate, I think that they should wear a mask on the bus.
Thank you, and isn't that part of the clause, that mask is required at all?
Uh, yes, and we could just clarify that, that there's no.
No opt-out?
No opt-out for that as it is with our close contacts.
And that's buses to school and home as well?
It's a federal mandate.
Okay.
With no opt-out.
Any other discussion?
I do want to say our community through this whole thing has been great to work with. Our parents, we know people get upset, there's things we don't like on either side of it and it's, we've been good to work with. I think most folks understand there's things we have to do, we may not like it, but we need to be in school and we're going to do our best to stay there, so. So I guess there's my recommendation for the COVID protocols that have been discussed and amended in the testing program. We need to have formal approval for that because we didn't, we didn't have that information at the last meeting.
I would like to, it would be nice to know what it looks like when we come back, you know, after this week off, just, you know, give us some clarification of what's, what's happening over the week off, that, because I mean, there's a lot of unknown things here, you know. I am glad we went with the, all of it, you know, where we're not certifying whether we've had the vaccine or not because we're seeing that it's both ways, you know, there's just a lot of, we're back to that same position, we really don't know what we're dealing with.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll get a motion.
I can't make the motion, sorry folks.
Did we amend it at all? Were we just, what are we saying?
Uh, just clarifying on the bus that there's no opt-out, so.
So we need?
As discussed and amended, maybe.
Okay. Mr. President, I move that the board approved the COVID protocols and testing program as discussed and amended.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the COVID protocols and testing program as discussed and amended. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Vote same side?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay.
It's not that I don't agree that the protocol is good, it's just I don't think it's enough.
Fair enough. Okay, thanks Debbie. Symmetry settlement agreement.
This is a continuation of February's latest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
February's gas price spike through legal consortium, we've come to an agreement, settlement agreement, which is roughly fifty percent of the rates that were charged in February, so that we have a remaining balance of about forty-six hundred. It was well over twenty thousand dollars for that one month, so that's been cut down to, it was eleven or so total, so we paid a good chunk of that. Part of the agreement says we don't, you know, put a press release out or anything like that. It's my understanding we've got a pretty good deal from our legal consortium on this, so. Not great, but I think it's as good as we can get. Also, we can't take further legal action, that's part of the agreement. We could take legal action on our own, it would cost far more than what we're going to pay for this, this bill anyway to do that. So I think this is our best bet and our best recommendation from our legal counsel. We recommend approving that settlement agreement.
Is there any precedent set here that if this happens again, we won't have to go through all this rigmarole? Or, I mean, do you see that this would ever happen again or? Has anything changed?
No, nothing's really changed. Except that we're not working with symmetry anymore and our new contract that we're going to approve is fixed cost. Right, so that contract, having a fixed price will, will ensure that we don't have price spikes.
When did they set them costs of new contract, I'm going, jumping ahead here a little bit. First year or?
I, I don't remember when they did that, it was, it's been in the last two months that, that they set that, that price. You're talking about the fixed price moving forward?
Yeah, they said that after it moved down, not when it was still high.
Yeah.
Well, it's hoping at least July fifteenth, you know, whatever prices that they, you know.
Any other discussion? We got a motion?
Mr. President, I move this board to approve the settlement agreement with symmetry energy for February's bill. I approve final payment of the invoice.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the settlement agreement with symmetry energy for February's bill and approve the final payment of the invoice. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Vote same side? Motion carried. Okay, KASV Energy Management Agreement.
Okay, so it was called KJUM, Joint Utilities Management Program, something like that. With KASV, they just changed the name. like that, with K A S B, they just changed the name to K S B Energy Management, so it's still the same organization. There is a new marketer and it's Woodford Energy. And this would be a contract moving forward of fixed price. So we're still working with the consortium there. I'd recommend moving ahead with that contract. And then authorizing me to execute that agreement.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the K A S B Energy Management Program participation and agency agreement as presented and authorize the superintendent to execute the agreement.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the board approved the K A S B Energy Management Program participation and agency agreement as presented and authorize the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Both same side? Motion carried. Disposal of excess property.
This is one to just help us clean up some stuff. We've got a few things to get rid of, some of that shop equipment is going on Big Iron. We're getting some good, good bids there, that should be finalized this week, I think. And some of those items, they weren't willing to mess with, you know, smaller items, Sanders, things like that. We do have some other furniture around that could go, so this would just be authorizing me to dispose of smaller valued items that need to go to the dump or go on Facebook Marketplace or at a garage sale, get a little bit of cash out of what we can, but to move some of that stuff out of here.
Mr. President, I move the board authorize the superintendent to dispose of excess property with a value of less than $500 for the remainder of the 2021 calendar year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the board authorize the superintendent to dispose of excess property with a value of less than $500 for the remainder of the 2021 calendar year. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Both same side? Motion carried.
Daycare. Uh, this is something we've been kicking around for some time about, you know, daycare is an issue in our community. It's also a consideration for our employees, to keep them working, they need daycare and we've got at least one, I know, that's having a heck of a time having daycare, so it is a, it is an issue to keep people employed in our school district. So what, we've never really done any, really had any movement on this, just kind of an idea, kicking it around, but about maybe operating our own daycare. I did meet with representatives from the Edwards and Stafford County Extension Agency and Economic Development. They've done some work with Kinsley on daycare there and they have, they work with the school, but the school owns the building, they lease the building to the provider. So rather than owning and operating the daycare, that, we wouldn't have to worry about how the business is run or recruiting a provider is probably the better option to do that. It would be nice to have some control over that, so we could, you know, have that for our employees. So if we would lease the building, considering the parents' teachers' building, if we would acquire that building from the bank, we could lease it for little rent or no rent and in exchange, our employees would get first, first dibs on the slots for daycare. So if you all are comfortable with that, I guess, concept, that's the way I'll go. You know, the first option would be, let's find a provider, figure out a way to do that. We do, the, the building's going to need some work, we're going to have some decisions to make there. Donations might help with that, there's some interest there. And then if we can't do that, then we could move ahead and consider operating that ourselves.
Would you be able to use our playground as the outdoor?
Probably not. It'd probably be good to fence off space just to the east of that building, put a little bit of playground equipment. Kitchen could still be utilized for snacks and meals, walking the kids to preschool. I think having that, you know, we talked about the recruitment and retention of employees is a positive, but also I know we have a handful of families that they just can't get their kid to daycare and get it to preschool and get them back and forth there that, I know we have a few that just, they can't manage coming to preschool, so if daycare can be a partner there, that maybe we get a few more kids in preschool, which would benefit our programs down the road. Don't really need any action, just, I guess, if we're comfortable with that, I'll kind of head that direction. I'm in favor of.
Board member activities and reports. We'll start with the ones we're on. Debbie?
Uh, maybe last month, we mostly discussed, starting after the school year, or I think I mentioned, we're only having two assistant directors this year instead of three, so they discussed who'd be responsible for which schools. Talked about training, mostly just prep a new staff.
Okay. Thank you, Debbie.
Thanks.
I don't have anything.
I seen the new owner came in, but he's up there a little bit enjoying it, so.
Yep. It works.
You didn't borrow it, did you?
No, I didn't. Not that I'm into.
Take it for a spin.
Yeah, he's close by, so. Charlie?
Nope.
Carl?
I don't have anything.
Okay, so, that's everyone.
Administrative reports. Mr. White?
Uh, I don't have too much. I was just going to report that, uh, the, I had Stephanie go through all of our activities and see how many kids were, were participating in activities. Up to this point, the last three years, we've had about 50% participation in fall sports. This year, I thought it was pretty high. It's up to about 70%. We have one class that is predictably low, they're below 50%, but anyway, that's encouraging that we have more kids going out for, for fall seasons, including, you know, all of the activities and cheer and everything. We throw a band, it gets a lot higher, so my goal is to get everybody in something at some point during the year, so I kind of pay close attention to that. Uh, next thing, on October 13th, I'm, I have Ms. Kansas, Hannah Clark, scheduled to come in and talk to students K through 12. She'll be doing two different sessions, a morning session and an afternoon session. The only other thing I have is count day's coming up on the 20th and it looks like at the junior high high school, we're going to be almost identical to what we were last year. I'm not sure what would the district, look like in the district, but at the high school, we're going to be pretty close to what we were last year, so. Any questions?
Good help me.
Yeah, I was going to say, I guess I should say that I am one of the people who tested positive, you guys probably know that, but I seriously just thought I had allergies and I tested just to make sure it was allergies and I'm, you know, it would have been, it would have been really negligent of me to not, so if anybody's got any symptoms, go get tested just so you know. It's inconvenient to have it, but it's better than spreading it.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer?
Uh, yeah, our greenhouse project is kind of hit a standstill once we started school and Mr. dealt with cross-country. We're, we're, the structure's done, we just need to get the skin on the thing and maybe have some, maybe have a couple hours this week, I can do some work on that, but it's coming along. I'll send you an email about the MTSF stuff, we'll cover that next time. Our newsletter, when Mrs. Kenneman left, we didn't have a class set up for anybody to do the newsletter. Last year was rough anyway, we just never got anything going. Mrs. Nixon is working on getting that going again, so you should see our newsletter, monthly newsletter here next month. I've been trying to work with our newspaper a lot more, I think they're, they're making more of an effort to, to work in St. John information, so submitting articles to them and information to them, help get, get things communicated to our, our families and patrons. Enrollment. So this, this, I know will change just a little bit, but what we have here is last year's headcount and FTE and on the right side here, the this year's preliminary headcount and FTE, so overall, we're 350 headcount, 312 FTE, so that's just a shade higher than last year as far as FTE and then same number on the nose for K-12 in high school. So really very similar numbers to last year. September 20th is our count date and we'll know more then. ESER funding, I've submitted an application for ESER 2 and just wanted to give you a breakdown of what that is. About $61,500 we spent last year in last year's budget. That was some technology that, and scrubbing machine and some personnel, additional personnel that first round of funding and the spark did not cover, so. And then talking about additional pay for our staff this year, an additional aid for this year, next year and HVAC control system to help with burnt fresh air intake, there's something that needs to be done. So that's our ESER 2 plan, that can be amended, we need engineers involved in that with our HVAC. ESER 3 plan just opened the other day, so we need to get that together and come up with what we want to spend that money on, but.
Is that the one you're targeting, the windows and some of that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The additional position that we've hired for Ms. Helfrich, my intention is to take her salary out of that, all of that out of ESER 3. ESER 3 requires 20% of the funds be spent to address learning loss, that's her position, so ESER 2 doesn't have any stipulations in there, so we'll use that other money. And then looking at windows, rooftop units, maybe rooftop units for the main gym, really a lot of HVAC and then windows, so.
And we have till the end of '22?
Twenty, 24 for ESER 3.
Right.
September 20.
ESER 2 is.
23.
Okay.
We still have two years on that.
So if you submitted, they were good funds, can you submit again within that same time window with adjusting it?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Really, I needed to get that ESER 2 plan submitted because we have last year's funds we need to reimburse to last year's budget, but we have to have that plan in place and it's also due in November, so, but we can always add if that is needed. And facilities, really the only thing, I was going to go over a few things before the building tour, but I really just wanted to address our HVAC system. They were in last week to get a final fix on the, on the air conditioning system. Both compressors are in great shape, run like a top, so having both compressors running, if there's a perfect storm, it could go down with both of them at the same time, but the redundancy there is, will get us where we don't need to lose sleep over that anymore, so. And, yeah, next month we'll go take a look around and take a look at the greenhouse and the schoolhouse project.
Sounds good. All right, executive session.
Um, I've got a handful of items we need to discuss, all for the personnel, 15 minutes on to do it? If not, we'll extend.
Just you or?
Uh, me and Mr. White.
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning and performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under K O M A, with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included, and that we return to open session at 8:21 in this room. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the board go into executive session to discuss specific individuals being hired or resigning and the performance of specific employees pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under K O M A, with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included, that we return to open session at 8:21 in this room. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Both same side? Motion carried.
We'll have a couple of.
Call the meeting back over. Resignations and contracts.
Good.
I'd recommend hiring Ickshell Nixon as junior class sponsor.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we hire Mrs. Nixon as junior class sponsor. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Both same side? Motion carried.
I have a resignation here from Carol Naughton, I'd recommend approving that. She's a library clerk.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the resignation of Carol Naughton. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Both same side? Motion carried.
You see your future agenda items there, pretty light agenda in October usually and we'll add the building tour to that. And any COVID stuff we got to talk about? Okay.
Thank you, Josh. Motion adjourned.
I so moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thanks, guys.